So then we'll call to order this first of the 2019 working session of the Nelson County School Board on January 3rd, 2019, at what I've now been told is 5:32. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. So, item number three on the agenda dedicated to Community 3A, which is organization of the Board. First item we have, 3A1, which is the oath of office for the two Board members who won their election this past fall. You don't get to sit in the chair either.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue as a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of school board member according to the law? And do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person, thus offering so help you God.
Y'all let a really dull life. Really sad.
Like the dance off camp?
Sad life.
I know it. They're not gonna change it either, because it'll have to be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I think it's great.
Did you all already sign off on your things? Do you need to sign off?
I think we'll sign.
Okay. Good deal. Well, we'll welcome the returning, the new returning Board members, Jeff Dixon and Diane Breeding. Appreciate you all putting yourself out there again back in the fall and continuing to do the work that we're all doing here as the Board for the Nelson County Schools. Moving on into 3A2, every January we, every Board identifies an elects chairperson and a vice chairperson, so the first item here, 3A2, would be the election of a chairperson. We would need a motion for someone for counting your 2019 as chairperson.
I will make the motion for Ms. Diane Berry to be the chairperson.
Okay, we've got a motion for Ms. Berry to be chair.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So at this time now, Ms. Berry, you get to go from this point forward as vice chair items and everything else.
Well, thank you. Next on the agenda would be the election of a vice chairperson. I need a motion to elect that individual. Do I hear one?
I'll make a motion for Ms. McGuire-Dye to be vice chair for 2019.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been made by a motion was made by Mr. Damon Jackie and second by Ms. Diane Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Dye. You are now vice chairperson. Next of, that would be 3B, would be the snow day calendar revision.
Hi.
Well, good afternoon.
Hello. So, we did our make up snow days at the last Board session, and both of those days were for the February dates. One was a non-flex PD day and the other was a work day, and I think there was some confusion on my part and Mr. Bradley's part that one of those was a work day. So we would like to propose that the district calendar be updated so that March 8th, which was the next professional learning day, which was a flex day, that means teachers did not necessarily have to work, but they did not already have their PD days be moved to a work day, that give them that work day back from February, so if we're looking at this new concept of backpack days, letting them have that day back, so that way we can bring them in to be able to do collaboration as we wanted them to do.
And just to rational here, if we didn't take the 15th and the 18th, we really would've missed out on the two week window, so you had to since we take those two days, because there's no, but this was a contracted work day that is no longer, so they would move to there.
Then we ended up, we had what, two days earlier, snow days earlier in the year than we typically experience, so we had to play it safe, I would think, and not push those make up days further on into the calendar year, because we want to try and preserve that end of school year date.
And this will allow teachers to still have their last day being what it currently is on the calendar as well, so this wouldn't, you know, have them to come in and figure out when to make up their time, because they would currently have to make up the time from February 15th, as we have it now. If we change it to a work day, as long as we have no more snow days, then we can use March 8th to be that day for teachers, so it'd benefit them as well to keep them on the calendar.
So essentially, we're asking that there's a vote at the working session, because we want to give clarity over the sooner than later, since it is a potential change to someone's calendar.
Could it be? Could be.
So does that mean there'll be no school for kids on March the 8th?
There is, currently is not, and would not be.
There still would not be, so it's not changing for the kids?
But it is still a make up day.
If we have another snow day, we'll bump it.
Right now, it would allow our teachers to still have their last day be May, whatever that is.
What was it? It was one of those two days in February, the 15th and the 18th was before the snow days, was a required work day.
Yes, the 15th was.
Okay. We're just moving that required work day to the 8th of March, which was potentially a non-work day, non-school day.
Which we're calling backpack days now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly right. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the calendar changes presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you. Okay, the next one, Superintendent Bradley, you will have, we're going to discuss our budget.
I think should take you to this document. If you present or zoom, it'll let you see a little easier. So, I'm gonna give a brief introduction to just thinking about the visioning process as we go throughout the budget, and then Amy will come in and talk in a little more detail to the degree that she can about the draft budget. So, as we've started this year, we've continued to come back to these three priorities around Nelson County Pride, Inspired Leading and Learning, and Shared Leadership, and while these are very broad, as we get into the draft budgeting process, especially as we move to the tentative budget in May, this becomes more specific. As we think about this cycle, this is seven steps, it's truly just an ongoing cycle. So, formally, there are seven steps. By law, before January 31st, the draft budget is shared with the, with the Board. It's reviewed by the Board. Really, the work for the budget, tentative budget happens between now and May 30th, and that's where a lot of the magic happens, is right here. That's where Amy gets a lot of clarity, and we work with our principal team in addition to the work we've already been doing over the past two, three months to do a needs assessment. And again, this is just the ongoing process that we've articulated. So, we talked, we talked quite a bit about what are some things that we know we're focused on as a district in this reallocation process, and again, broadly, we recognize that as we want to continue to build some of these pieces out, these are pieces that we are very focused on. So, there are nine things listed here, you'll see those play out over the course of the next three to four months in conversation, as we think about salary schedules, as we think about reallocating for shared leadership, inspired leading and learning, and Nelson County Pride. So, while these are big pieces, the importance that we continue to reallocate towards them is gonna be really big. So, we talk about these pieces here too, as we think about the budgeting process, financial forces and trends that continue to shape our reality, and the decisions that impact students. These are things that Mr. Goff, Mr. Owens, myself are meeting weekly right now to think through. We also talk about this, this is what we talked about at the tax hearing, same exact slide. So, if you look at this slide, this date on this slide, it hasn't changed. Nothing much has changed. Our enrollment's up slightly over last year, which does give us some sense of, I think, stability and forward movement for the process, so increase enrollment does play a role in this process, where it gives us a little more flexibility and freedom. But if we look at, at the tax hearing, we talked about aligning spending to priorities, we continue to talk about increasing opportunities for student leadership, school safety repairs, busing and transportation, which we've already seen some contributions to, employee salary and benefits package, and expanding early college and career pathways, which is something that we also plan out in this budget very closely. This reality isn't necessarily going away, and we recognize that, Amy has a good pulse on that, but we don't expect the trend to reverse from a state standpoint. So, with that said, Amy will take it from here.
I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the process and where we've started and where we are right now. Apologize if I start coughing, I've been doing really well all day, which probably means that I'm gonna, you know, start while we're here. You'll expect me to be able to operate that. So, the needs assessment's been done the last couple of months, really it's just been an ongoing discussion with our principals and our directors about what's going on in their schools, what's going on in their programs, what, where we are allocating enough resources and where they might feel that they could benefit for some more, and just to get a true understanding of where we are with the district, then we use that, see, you might just want to dig that. You go on to the next slide. Then we use that as we start looking at the draft budget. The draft budget really is just to clarify the data that we've gathered during the needs assessment. It's to take those requests from the schools to prioritize it, and that's what those slides that Wes showed you already were. It's getting a handle on where we are as a district and where we want to go and how do we get there. So, when we do the draft budget, the state requires that we present that to you, and it's presented formally and in a public meeting, but we have no information by the time we get to January that's truly accurate from the state side. We're getting ready to move into the general session. We don't know what's gonna happen. There's been reports on what's gonna be discussed as far as retirement goes, they can read us at the budget if they so choose, if the tax revenue hasn't gone. So, when we come into this draft budget discussion in January, the information that we have is a guess. And so, what I did focus on in this next slide is just, is just to explain some of the things that are going on, those trends that we've seen, most of it reiterates what we had talked about at the tax hearing, with the changes into CERS, the possible changes to KTRS, with the increased requirements for local funds to support education where state funds are decreasing, and we've kind of looked at that a little bit. And then on the next slide, I kind of outlined what I'm expecting for our revenue for fiscal year 2020. Give you a breakdown of where we are this year, where we expect to end up, and where we would expect to be next year. And then what we can really do is use those expectations with additional data that we received throughout the next couple of months from the state, and really start focusing in on those priorities that we've come up with as a district and where we want to move forward. So, that's where we are. I did break down one more slide just to show you that the ideal scenario is that your school district spends 80% or less on salaries. That tends to keep you in a safe range. Some districts are higher than that now. We are pretty much in line with that, we tend to be at the 78% to 79%, and that will be our goal for next year as well, to keep our salaries in the 78% to 79% range. The remaining 20% to 22% goes to those other three areas. I did want to show you the debt service, those were prior bond service, where we've upgraded energy efficiency facilities and things like that, but we have to pay the bonds at a general fund. Even if we have funds available in the facilities fund, we're not allowed to use it because we bonded, so you can pay for it. So next year, that's gonna be about $340,000, and then fleet updates, we need to be budgeting $500,000 per year to keep our fleet maintained. We did spend a little bit more this year, just didn't buy any last year, but looking at it, I do think if we just do the $500,000 a year, we'll be okay, and that leaves the 6.2 left for the other services and supplies.
That debt service, I just want to make sure, because I'm a little bit like you, today was my last day of antibiotics, so my head's a little bit fuzzy.
This is my first day.
Yeah, so my head's a little bit fuzzy at times. I want to make sure I understood the debt service piece there, that 330 and 340, that is the spend now, the general fund to go against the debt service on the energy efficiency work that we've been doing, correct?
Yes, and there's two separate bonds.
Right.
There was one in 2017, and then there was a previous one in 2014. The 2014 one was entirely done through savings, which means that entire bond is paid out of the general fund. And so, I actually looked over the next, I think it will be done in about 18 years, but 330 is the lowest that it'll be, and it will actually get up to $450,000 some years, where we're gonna have to budget it, because that was.
And I just wanted to make sure, because I remember the earlier one, like you said, it was 100% bond. The second one though, that was just a couple of years ago, I remember that Tim Hawkins-Smith had recommended taking the approach of part and part, part as bond, part as general funds, so that we could preserve some of that bonding capacity for facility.
And that takes in both of those.
Yeah, okay. The, can we go back to the slide before? And I don't want to get too deep into this one, but I know that every year, whenever we start working on the draft budget, we typically have built it based around a expected 4% revenue increase, because it is always easier as that calendar year goes on, as we go through the March, the April, the May, into August, when we actually had the tax rate hearing. It's always easier to go off, to reduce it, than it is to all of a sudden go, oh, well now we need to add back in. Well, why would we ever need to add back in? Apparently, we could've built it without it at the beginning, is that?
This does include a 4%.
So, this does include a 4%. What I'm, what I'm looking at there though, the property tax, that very first line, and it's a trend that I, we started to see about a, two years ago, where the, with the economy swinging, with what's been going on here in Nelson County through residential construction, but now we're really starting to see it with the Great Pyramids coming to the old rock quarry over the next couple of years, and the rest of the distillery boom, we've started to see the property value swing, not just individual values of property going up, but more taxable property going on the road. So, and so this past August, whenever we did the 4% revenue increase hearing, it wasn't truly, everybody's bill went up 4%, it was, it was a smaller number. As I'm looking at your projection here, or potential projection here, am I seeing that potentially we could have about 3/4 of a million additional revenue coming in off of property taxes?
Yes, the same thing happened this year.
Okay.
We did get that much this year, the problem is we were dealing with a million dollar loss in CEAC funding.
Okay.
And I'm not anticipating a million dollar loss in CEAC funding, because our ADA seems to be remaining pretty stable.
Okay.
So what happened last year is we did have that much, but it wasn't enough to compensate for the CEAC reduction.
Sure.
But I did look at that, and considering last year, a large portion, close to 25% of our tax revenues that were expected last year from new property, of course, there was old property that had fallen off the books and stuff, but then there was enough of it that increased, that we didn't have to increase tax rates by 4%,
Right.
Our revenue increased by 4%. And so I would expect the same type of thing to happen again.
So, could, but could it, and I know, again, I'm maybe digging too deep in the weeds, too early in the process here, but I'm trying to think ahead to, as we work through this budget process this year, for next fiscal year, 1920 year, I mean, could we potentially be in August talking about a 4% revenue increase, but the actual tax increase being even less than it was this year?
Yeah, I honestly don't have enough information to really verify that at this point. Those numbers aren't even sent to the state until, until next year.
Sure.
And I know that Tim was actually hoping that would happen last year, or for this year, but, and we got pretty darned close, so it'll just depend on which part of the county they're actually looking at this year to see, to see what happens.
So again, I mean, that's something I believe really interesting, if we get closer to that August timeframe and you do get from the PDA those numbers, really what's it looking like? I mean, this past year, I think 4% revenue increase was one of these among roughly.
Yeah, and our assessments went up by $100 million last year, a little bit over, and so I mean, that's a huge increase in assessments. And so, you'll notice that I do have the CEAC remaining pretty stable. Our special needs student counts have gone up, but we will have a decrease in funding based on our assessments going up as well, so I feel like that those should balance each other out.
This would be a great example of that interworking of the machinery of the economic engine, the community, and the school district, public education engine as well, and as the economy and community does better, it can also help support the local public schools through that tax revenue.
So that's where we are, and again, we're just gonna be focused on making sure that these priorities play out in the budget as we work through it in the next few months, between now and the tentative budget, focusing on our allocations, focusing on our salary tables, getting those all taken care of and approved, so that when we come to the tentative budget in May, we're in a solid place and really know what we're expecting.
I want to ask you a question now.
Yes, ma'am.
When you said a million dollars loss on CEAC?
Left it.
CEAC, okay, now help me out here, because CEAC didn't change, so what happened?
Our enrollment changed.
A million dollars lost?
We've lost.
Let's take a look up at the, so the combination of increased local valuations and decreased attendance in the 2017, 2018.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yes.
So it's 500,000 and 500,000.
So basically, what they do is they take your total ADA and they multiply by 4,000, and then they take that 30 cent effort. So if we've gone up by $100 million, then they take 30 cents on the, of that,
Off the top.
And they subtract it immediately from multiplying that 4,000. So if you've lost students, plus you've had that increase, you're hit twice.
Yeah, this is another example, generality that was talked about last election cycle of CEAC being at its highest level ever here, you know, and the positive impact it would have on our local schools, which was not the fashion.
And honestly, they increased it by, was it $18 per student was what they increased it by, so.
But at the same time, the cause of property values in our community, our CEAC does not see that type of, you know, that.
That is correct.
If you were in eastern Kentucky.
Just a chance.
Possibly.
Possibly, yes, because of the, because of their potential of not growth, you would see the problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions?
I think the details of this will really come out in the conversation over the next three months, as we look at the salary schedules and staffing policy. So, the staffing policy is something that I think we're gonna have to spend quite a bit of time talking through, because it has implications on a lot of these things, and something that I'll be sharing with each of you in more detail.
You had also talked about us coming into the short legislative session, and while you didn't mention any specific items, alluding to the fact that there are already some conversations going on, you know, with the failed special sessions, so we kind of think there's probably gonna be something about pension during this session.
I believe charter, charter school funding will also be talked about.
That's another.
The scenario with that, that they've talked about, is because we get a certain amount per student in our base funding, the idea is that that would follow the student. So if a student from our district were then to go to a charter school, we would have to send the funding that we received for that student to that charter school. So that's been one of the scenarios, and they have talked about that that's gonna be a focus in this session. Now whether they'll get something through, I don't know.
See, I know those two there, have you yourself heard any other that are education-related funding items?
There was just a brief mention about the fact that the budget could be revisited if, if it needed.
Revenue's had short.
That, that's the only thing I'm concerned about. When, when the original budget passed, there was some concern as to whether that tax revenue bill would truly generate the taxes that the state felt like it would generate. If it does not generate what the state felt like that it would generate, then it, you get, with that cycle, you don't have the funding to meet all those budgetary guidelines that you set forth.
So it could be like what we experienced from years past, where halfway through the year, and it was a 10%, I'm making up the number here, a 10% reduction in funding, but since you were already halfway through the year on your spend, it really equated to about a 20% cut over the last six months.
And so, always possible.
Yeah, okay.
But again, it was just a brief overview of what we could expect to see at the general session, so I'm actually very curious about what is gonna come out of it, so.
So we don't formally come back to discuss the budget until May, unless decided by the Board, obviously you can add to any agenda, but May is the tentative budget. Between now and May, there'll be a lot of conversations occurring about this, because in order to reallocate towards these things, it will, it will force us to look closely at how we're spending.
The, this draft budget, this month, we don't do a vote on a draft, it's the tentative in May, correct?
That's correct. Policy actually states that the Board shall formally and publicly examine a detailed estimate of revenues and proposed expenditures, but it does not say anything about approval, and this one doesn't go to the State.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'll get to know better.
Mr. Bradley, do you have anything else to add to that, to this?
No.
Okay, let me get back here. Okay, so we're on number four here, 4A is annual nutrition report.
I think that's on, but.
You didn't tell me that. Maybe next time we'll have a lesson before the meeting.
He was testing.
I didn't pass.
Hi. So, bye.
She's here for real.
Here for real this time. So we talked in December, and we kind of went through the nutrition priorities and the goals that we had set, and I wanted to just take this time to go through kind of what led to that, so going into the numbers. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, because we can just summarize it up. We went a little backwards last year with participation, therefore lost some revenue with that, so we're definitely exploring other options on how can we increase that participation. One thing is that I showed you all last month was the new menu software, which also came with some new menu items. Starting in February, that's when we will start allocating the different, the money to, we want to go to commodity foods, and like which products we want to choose, and then also our DOD, which is the fresh fruits and vegetables, which I plan to allocate more money to. And, so now we're kind of at this point with the CEP progression, which is the Community Eligibility Provision. A lot of people have questions about that. We currently have five schools that are, that qualify for the CEP, so these schools receive breakfast and lunch at no charge. New Haven, Boston, Bloomfield, and Horizons have all been CEP for about four years. ELC was added in August of this year. Looking at these numbers, basically, you have to have a minimum of a 40% ISP, which is Identified Student Percentage, and they base that on kids that are directly certified. And they base that on kids that are directly certified for free meals. They don't use the Free and Reduced Lunch applications in these schools. So April of every year, we have to report these numbers to the state, and then we can look, and then we have to kind of work it into, can we sustain if we add certain schools at no charge, which is on the big Excel sheet. So this is April's data, so this is what was used last year to determine that we could add ELC. As far as where we're at with that, we are, I hope to add more schools. I think it's a really great program. Say that again, what'd you just say? I would really like to add more schools. It's a very, it's a great program, but it's a numbers game too. So we have to, just kind of anticipating on where the numbers will come in April.
So when you're talking about that, I mean, looking at, with this being April of 2017 numbers, which set the 1819 school year that we're in right now...
Well, no, we would have used April of 2018.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're at the high.
Okay, it's still 2018 in my head, yeah. So looking at these, you know, I, my eyes were drawn like to Foster Heights there, and their numbers by, and just barely are over Boston School, which is currently enrolled. I mean, is that potentially what you're talking about when you say, looking at our numbers this April to see whether or not there are some others that we could possibly grow into the CEP program? And it could be, if numbers continue to look correct?
Yes. And it all really depends on that number of the directly certified students. I get that report every month from the state. They do have, we can help, they can help us kind of try to find kids that we might be missing. But we can also group schools together. So say, one school is like right there, like at 40%, and then I've got a higher percentage of schools, we can group all those together to get that ISP at a higher percentage, therefore our claim rate would be higher.
I just look at district wide, and it's just, I'm not impressed. Forty-one percent.
Well, you know that...
Is that because of food, or is that because of...
No, no, oh, sorry. Identified student percentage is kids that are directly certified, so they don't have to fill out free or reduced. They, they receive government assistance.
That's what I'm saying, this is what led me to thinking, oh, gosh.
Well, in a way, it's...
It is, oh, God, to me, it is.
Directly certified means that there's a potential that they're already receiving SNAP, food stamps.
Yes.
Or some other government assistance. And if they're already receiving that type of assistance, then automatically they would, if they filled out the Free or Reduced Lunch application form, they'd automatically get it. It's just a way to eliminate that extra form to be filled out. Which in theory, number-wise, district-wide, we hit the 40%. However, it is so close, that's where the concern...
We might not be able to operate in the block, and that's where it's...
That's what I'm saying, yes.
So that's why, I mean, I'm just, I put that up there as like, that's the district wide. I mean, if, it probably wouldn't happen district-wide, because the numbers aren't there. So then we look at the free and reduced rate, so that's the schools that are not CEP, so they still have to fill out the household income form. I want to, the main thing here is, I want to work on how can we better communicate that form to parents and the schools, but also make it more convenient for them. Right now, all we do is offer a paper application. So there are systems that we can look at that would offer it online, and you wouldn't be able to submit anything until all the information is on there. And it would definitely speed up the process.
Now, we still get verified, the numbers drawn and all that, so I think...
Which that depend, every year that can change, right?
Yes, that changes.
Let me ask this question. Does it hurt the schools if, say, people maybe that aren't free or reduced lunch, the higher income, if those people are filling out the forms, but then the people who would be free or reduced lunch don't fill out the forms? It's not an average or anything, is it? So does that, does that hurt anything, you see what I'm saying?
It's your, your own.
It's either, it's a yes or no.
Yeah.
It's two piles, okay.
And historic, because this is one of the odd anomalies that happens. This, this is also what drives discounts for the E-Rate program that's helped fund our network upgrade a couple of years ago, where we got basically stuff for 20 cents on the dollar, feds paying the 80% of it. An anomaly that happens, looking back like on the previous sheet, you'll see that Boston School has 150 students that are directly certified. New Haven has 162 that are directly certified. That's 312 directly certified. And both of those schools feed into Thomas Nelson, which only has 192 directly certified. Historically, at the high school level, that there are fewer students that get identified, and I think sometimes it maybe is because of the stigma? Or maybe it's because of, that high school student just doesn't bring the form home? Is there an easier way? You were just getting at that. Is there an easier way that we could capture that information to make it easy for our parents, so that they don't have to rely upon Daniel or Max for remembering to bring home the forms, right?
But then if you even get it home, then you've got to fill it out and make sure it gets back to the school, but then it gets back to us, because we have to process it.
And it doesn't go into the black hole of the backpack or locker.
But there, but that's not the only reason either, because that's what I did in Nelson County. The thing is, when you get to be in high school, and we all know, kids are being made fun, or they are secretly identified as being a free or reduced kid. And the only way that I found that I could cope with it, or kids, kids could deal with it, is we were given numbers. They were given a number. So every kid had a number. And so when they came to the line, they would just say 1925.
Which they do now, too.
And they do now.
Everybody knows.
The kids, but kids, when you get to high school, you know yourself, it's a different ballgame, and you don't want, you don't want somebody else to know that you're on free or reduced.
It's not like back in our days, when you had lunch tickets that were green, pink, and yellow.
No, we did that a couple of years, and then we decided that wasn't good anymore. You know, because...
No, our program is, there's really no way for anyone to know, because it's all right there, and nobody can see if they...
Well, it's not the idea of seeing, though. It all connects to me, though, it all connects on what the kid wears to school, what they do, you know, kids are not known. Kids know. That's just the way they, that's just the way it is, whether we like it or not, kids know.
Do we, do we look at like household eligibility? The younger sibling who's at the elementary, that the paperwork does get turned in?
Yeah, so they only have to fill out a form for, like, if they had, if they had Cox's Creek, Thomas Nelson, and Bloomfield Middle, they just have to fill out a form and list all the children that are...
And so then all household members within Infinite Campus that connects in with our lunch system automatically are identified to receive a certain lunch pricing, or whatever it takes. Okay.
Jessica and I also talked about today, about the benefits, not only the free lunch program, but when it comes to college applications, the FASTFA ACT applications, all of that comes free with a free and reduced, reduced lunch application, if you're approved. So marketing that information, that all students and parents are aware of those benefits are so much more than just a free lunch at school, so that all kids have access to that.
In many ways, I think, it matters, you're concerned. I would say kids, based on my experiences in the high schools, are probably more open-minded and generous and thoughtful, and are probably less of that competition than there once was, partly due to the media and technology, and I guess develop more empathy in kids. I think this is my anecdotal assumption, so, just to give some solace.
Well, no, yeah, it's the four-digit number, or whatever length the number is. I mean, punch it in, they walk on, the only person they could potentially see anything is that food services employee that is sitting there looking at the monitor, potentially that maybe doesn't, maybe doesn't even know that they're doing a free or reduced lunch.
And then, we do have the numbers, so you all can do this. This is all from last year's data. I will, like I said, the summary of it is, our participation went down. We're going to focus on what we're going to do to build that back up. Like, and then with the nutrient analysis, the new menu software guarantees that we are completely compliant with all UFA regulations, which, update on that, is actually changing a little bit, so they're kind of relaxing on the sodium restrictions and the whole grains. So that's definitely going to play a part in some of the food choices that we serve next school year.
Just wanted to go over to the wind, do you still have packets anymore?
Hopefully not.
So I, I think it's important that we acknowledge that there's some really good work going on across our district, and all of our cafeterias. But Jessica's work has been very intentional. I think the, the, her ability to take the data and analyze it and act upon it is driving the priorities, and it's really powerful stuff. So I think we should expect this to continue to really grow quickly, and there's a lot of good things going on in our food service program.
I'm excited about...
Let me ask something else. After-school snack programs, how successful is that?
It's doing good. It's, there's some criteria with that. Just to qualify for the program, the school has to meet 50% free and reduced rate. So we have it at five schools. Cox's Creek is not eligible, that's the only state that has an after-school program that cannot just pay in it. But it is pretty, successful.
Is that primarily for little people?
After-school care usually, so it could be, yeah.
Talking about some participation, I mean, I've noticed some accolades that you've been getting, you know, through social media, some of the breakfasts, things that you've done a little bit differently. Or, and while these numbers, you said, were last school year numbers, okay, so I'll call it pre-Jeska.
Yes.
Are you starting to see, or even hear conversations from students that they are participating more, that they are taking advantage more? Just gut feeling, I guess, we don't have hard data yet.
Yes, and I, I think they are, but I think the biggest thing is, you have to keep it fresh. Before this year, we were on the same menu for about three or four years possibly, so they were tired of it. So I think they're still trying to like regain the trust in the food service department, like, are we going to be stuck with this menu for years to come? That's not the case.
You talked about massaging the numbers a little bit. When can, when do you expect to possibly have some ideas on how to arrange things going forward?
For...
For the, maybe combined schools or...
For CEP. So we have to report the data on April 1st. And then we have so many deadlines, as far as like you have to make decisions on, are you going to add a school, regroup a school, and then apply for it? So by April, definitely have something.
So I think that's something we could add, is it talking only for April? Is this something that we can back to?
Like an update on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sounds good. Okay, our next item would be 4B, is our February work session.
So we added this as an agenda item to every meeting. We were, we wanted to ensure that we had the opportunity to evaluate the, the future of work sessions. I will tell you, this time we don't have enough data to make a recommendation on that, but in January, at the board meeting, we could potentially have a recommendation on that. Just a, just a, it'd be a reminder every month, we have freedom to, to choose.
And maybe that's how it starts to play out, is that the regular session, we get the better feel for each month.
I think, I think we too will get the better feel for it each month, as we think about, what are these conversations looking like? And, you know, February's probably a good example of one that we may be able to give by with, just the way, just the timing of it, and it's, it's very possible that February is one of those months. So we will, we'll be prepared to, to, to evaluate that over the next two weeks, so that in January 15th, we have a recommendation. But you guys will be aware of that, over that time, and be able to make a judgment. We do have one more voting item, and that's, and Chase will explain why that is.
Yeah, so I guess too, just, just a little bit, so you all know, we get the opportunity on Fridays to go, you know, caretaker schools, and kind of assigned to the schools. I think speaking to Jessica's work, we get to go out to schools, a lot of times the people that are recognized are cafeteria folks, and you can tell the excitement that exists in that department. So I just wanted to make sure I said that before we move on. These three, honestly, I will apologize, you know, the goal is that you all, I think it's important that you all know about these overnight and out-of-state trips before they occur, obviously. I think these are a little unique. One, because we, the meeting was early in December, and so it wasn't at the regular time. Two, a couple of these are because students won certain things, and they got to go to certain competitions, and they didn't know some of those details and that occurred. I think that Nelson County one, that's a, if I'm wrong, that's a national Farm Bureau award that that student's going to get to participate in and be a part of. And so those are some exciting things, student leadership, but that's why you're seeing these field trip requests this, tonight, versus seeing them at the regular board meeting, because we, they would be gone by that time, so.
These are all really strong student leadership opportunities.
Okay, I need a motion to accept a field trip request by the WFA, Beta Clubs of Thomas Nelson, and the Beta Club of Cox's Creek.
Motion?
Ms. Breeding made the motion, I'll hear a second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great job.
So, the next piece, I'm going to, Chase, if you could set the timer for four minutes, I can't go past that. We're going to give an overview of the pride team work that's happening, and we want to make sure you guys know which teams you're on. The timing of it is not going to be perfect every month, so we have a lot of teachers involved, we have people from across the district coming together on these days. And essentially, the pride team deck, if you, if you haven't received an invite yet from your team leader, you will over the course of the next week. Each of you were assigned to a team. Some of the people on this list don't know that they've been totally nominated and assigned to these teams yet either, so I'm not going to go through, go through that process. I think, at the end of the day, we are, we are having a conversation around our purpose as a district, and what is it, what is really the purpose of schools within our district? Chase has a t-shirt over there, it's the same t-shirt, it's just the front and the back. We are committed to being, and we already, we already feel like we are, we just haven't officially put it on the walls yet. We contacted KDE, they gave us a mixed message about this. True story.
Does that surprise you?
Well, first district in the state of Kentucky where every student is a gifted student. And while we recognize that there are certain requirements to be gifted and talented, we're still saying all of our students are gifted, and our job is to ensure that we have a language to talk about how we're working to excavate those gifts. So over the next five months, we'll have a meeting in this room before the board meeting. It'll be four-ish to five-ish, and there'll be about 50 people in this room. Sometimes, especially with like the Put People First group, with Robyn McCoy, they might have to leave and go to a quiet space, but most of the teams will be in this room.
Is that because Mr. Goss's team is going to take over?
That's right. That's right, Mr. Jay.
We, we really do have a mix of, we have a mix of teachers, administrators, community members, parents, students. And I think as the process evolves, we'll see opportunities to bring in a variety of people. We'll also be going into the schools over the course of the month of February, and really connecting them to this work, making them aware of what's going on. And honestly, by the end of this conversation... And honestly, by the end of this conversation in May, what are, what we've really come to is that we will have a better language to talk about the skills, which we're calling, and this is where that shirt comes to life. We're calling, oh, where are you? Gifts. We're saying, not only are we committed to saying every kid is gifted, we're saying that they have gifts and part of our job is to bring these out. So these will be skills that we are really working to unearth. We want to be able to identify essential skills in schools and students based on our core values. Next year will be a piloting process on a very small scale in classrooms where teachers are really committed to exploring and building some of these out further. Because it's going to take us time to really study this closely with teachers. And it's going to take us time to build that conversation and confidence to do so. So there'll be here, if you could, Jim, I, maybe it's, maybe I can tell you this. If you could not take a picture of this, because some don't know they're on the teams yet. So just remind you guys of which teams you're on. Rebecca, Put People First. You're highlighted because they've communicated that to you.
Did they butcher my name or did I'm on that team?
The highlights are because I already had it, but I did not write that one in there. Don't start that back. I don't, I didn't, that's not my team.
It's all right, Chase, I'll get you back.
That's not my team. No, no, I will not.
So Robin didn't do it.
I know Robin didn't do it, but I know it was you.
I think Chase Scott just got ran over by one of those $500,000 fleet vehicles and then he was backed up over.
That's your four minutes. The highlights, we're trying to figure out any books we needed. That's what the highlights.
Oh, I highlighted if I even, if I talked to them.
Is this the same book?
Yes.
So in the same way, Jim, Brooks, and Casey, we know that their relationship to this conversation is going to be essential. They too have been invited on teams and will be a part of this conversation. Jim is on the Reimagine Possibility team along with Jeff and others. So Damon's on the Innovate and Grow team. Diane, Dedicated to Our Community. And Ms. Berry, Nelson County Pride, Put People First.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I'm sorry, sorry. Energize the world.
Okay, I thought, I thought I was on the world, yes.
So I'm looking at the flame over there and I'm like, that's Nelson County Pride. That's Energize the World. So that, that's really going to be more focused on communication. Dedicated to Our Community is going to be more focused on the workforce, development skills. Innovating Grow is more looking at critical thinking, problem solving, Reimagine Possibility, collaboration, creativity, and Put People First, the emotional intelligences that really congeal and bring all this together. The things that allow you to say, I really want to work with that person. They're great. They're going to be, somebody brings me joy to my life. So with that said, this is, this is where we're at with the pride team. The dates, our board meeting dates, so the 16th, the 15th will be our first pride team meeting. This room will be hustling and bustling. And at about 5:00, it'll shut down and we'll transition this room to the, to the board, to the more traditional setting.
So did Mr. Brooks know that he was being invited or is he one of them that doesn't know yet?
He knew. In fact, he was so far ahead of the game that he, he'd already purchased deep learning. True story. She's, she just found out about 35 minutes ago. Which if you're a journalist, that's just normal.
And while we can joke and laugh some about this, which I love that we've got that familiarity with each other on it, look at some of those names up there. There's some power people that are, are listed. And not just power people that are different leadership, but I, I saw some on there that are movers and shakers within the community.
Are you talking about everybody, all those committees meeting in one day?
Yeah, at the same time.
Oh, that'll be a good one. It'll be fun at church.
So if you, if you see, if you see...
We'll be in that little corner, Robin.
If you see people wearing these sunglasses, they are, it's about changing our lens and you're shifting the paradigm around the way we think about school and we think about students. So today, we want to spend 12 to 14 minutes, that's the goal, talking about things that resonate with you in chapter two. We can go, we can go however long we need to go. 14 minutes is the target. Which gives us each a few minutes to, to share out. Also, I asked the team to, if they're going to, if they're here, they need to, they need to come closer so that they can hear you guys and also potentially contribute. So the homework was this right here.
I have mine.
Yeah, have at it.
Okay. I like being first. That way somebody don't grab mine. This one was, this one is, was in page 14. Recognize that innovation and creativity are always in the DNA of every human being. Okay. To me, it's a no-brainer. You just haven't found it. Those are still missing. You just, you just have to dig deep enough to find it. And I think that's what education is about, is, is helping those kids, helping our kids dig deep enough to find it. Okay, there's mine.
You know, reading, and I had to go back and look at some of my, my highlights here. Your comments about every person being, having a gift and not being necessarily a gift in that traditional sense. That gifted and talented art student, that gifted and talented student that's in mathematics or, you know, whatever, they were pulled out of the classroom, you know, possibly in past years. Reading through in that chapter two, what I took out of that is trying to find the way to connect with that student for them to then be able to connect with their environment. In particular, you know, I came across a piece that talks about a positive sense of self, spirit of belonging that we feel when our cognitive, emotional, social, and physical needs are being met. You know, that idea, the student who potentially has never been told before that you have a gift. And so therefore, they didn't have that emotional self-worth, that they didn't have that cognitive self-worth. And as we start to being able to make that connection for the students, then all of a sudden, we've got that student that maybe in the past, even at home, it's like, oh, well, you're always wrong. You never do it right. You didn't feed the dog right or whatever. They start seeing where their own self-worth and start making that connection where, where do they fit within our, nowhere our school's community, but eventually our society? And what is it that's going to make me be a special person that is going to help me be successful at whatever I do? Whether it's a dog walker or whether it's an astrophysicist. I mean, that's what kind of struck me reading through to it.
My turn?
Your turn. So I remember reading through this chapter and I remember it taking me back to my Catholic school days. And because I went to Catholic school. And Catholic school, and I'm sure it's probably changed now. I mean, it's been, you know, 30, 31 years since I've been in Catholic school. But, you know, they had one way to educate a child. They had one way. And if you didn't meet that one way, there really wasn't a whole lot that they could do for you, you know? Where this...
It was your fault. No, it was your fault. It wasn't the teacher's fault that you weren't learning. It was your fault because you put it right.
And so, and I think this, I think kind of dives into that a little bit, I think, better by saying that there's multiple opportunities and multiple different ways on how you can educate a student and look at it both.
So I say you have to find the difference, find a way.
Right.
Find a way?
See, that's the simple answer. I wouldn't say, meaning it was your fault, but as, but as that teacher 30, oh, as that teacher 30 years ago, well, you didn't get it. Well, it's you. It's not me trying to help get that gift out. It's you. It's something about you and Diane.
On page 17, I'm stuck on this throughout the whole book and I'm interested to see how, how this is going to play out. And that is, because character is something that I always associated with home learning. That your character was something that you learned at home. That's where grit, all these things, the words that we use, those are all things that I did not, don't think I learned in school. I think I learned at home. They are things that I do believe that my eight-year-old has learned at home. So I'm anxious to see how, as a school community, how we take these things and we're able to care for the whole person and put this into action. So that's what resonated with me is that the character piece of it is, it's a big job.
I think the assumption this author, these authors are working from is that you can't separate one from the other. If you don't have those, that type of mentality or belief in yourself and the emotional piece, then you're not going to be able to do some of the other things as well. And that's a, and I felt like we, a lot of it, we probably interpreted that in sports, you know, where you got that from a coach or you got that type of treatment from your band or wherever it may have been.
So if you guys look at page 17, essentially, if they were trying to, if these authors, Follin, Quinn, and McKeacham were really thinking more deeply, they would have called these gifts instead they called them conferences. So we're just, we're just ahead of the game.
You can call them gifts in your book.
We are. We have, we have a book and we're calling them gifts.
I do agree with you about home. You and I have talked about this. Where we were raised, that's the way it was.
But not everybody's raised the same way. Not everybody is a native English speaker. I mean, there's so many things now that weren't there.
That's right.
To do.
And, and people think it's all supposed to be done in school. A lot, a lot of stuff, a lot of manners and character, just like this list.
We're saying that because we're moving to deeper learning, so.
That's what I'm saying. They expect it, they expect it in school to be one, which I don't necessarily agree, but...
Because we see the connections with learning, that a child has a major barrier in front of them. They feel a lack of belonging or their heart is hurting or they're hungry. You see all these little, really social, emotional, and physical issues regarding health that affect the academic progress of a student. Thus, we're, we're taking that on by the norm and saying, we've got to meet those needs. Where before, you may not have had to do that 50 years ago or 20 years ago or whatever. But I feel like now, that's just really in the forefront of our, our vision right now.
We did have to do it all those years ago. I don't know how we worked it, Maslow, I think, or something, the hierarchy of needs. But the work that I picked up is just was actionable, that making these competencies, these gifts, these strands. Actually, well, so what, what the cookie of needs, the meeting basically, put the house.
I think this is where words are really important too. When we say that our role is to excavate gifts, part of that means that there's a lot of kids that we may not realize at this point have these gifts. Like the job is, regardless of background, regardless of where they might have come from, like part of, part of our job as educators is to find these hidden gems that they didn't even fully understand or recognize was part of who they were. And I think the other thing too, it talks a lot about systematic transformation. And I think what's important in that is you can't, you can't separate some of these, right? Like, we can't just focus on this piece of it or just focus on this, that it's got to be holistic in nature because they all, like we've been talking about, they all play on each other. So I think like when kids are put in really situations, they have to think really critically, like you develop grit from that when you, when you're pushed to think that way, right? So that's what, they interact a lot.
I think a part of, the biggest piece here that I realized a lot is self-awareness.
We didn't have that self-awareness because no one, well, speak for myself. At times, we didn't talk about some of these things in the sense that I should have been able to do them necessarily. So self-awareness around what type of a collaborator am I? How do I, how, what is appropriate to interact with others? Those are things that either you, you did them well, you didn't do them well, and you didn't hang out with the kids and you didn't think, did them like you, right? That was pretty much it. So that self-awareness piece, understanding the role you play, no matter how gifted or not gifted you think you are, the role you play in that team and that group is going to evolve depending on the team.
Something you just said, Chase, made me think on 14, in that text box there. Working on real issues of relevance to themselves in the world, problem designers provide options for finding solutions to new ambiguities. And so on. There's several, you know, phrases or words within that about, that go to what you were just saying about giving students the opportunities to figure out what they are gifted at. And sometimes that also means that we as the educator has to be willing to say, I don't know what the answer to that is. Keep, keep digging at it. What do you come up with?
It's not challenging to find answers to things that have already been answered.
I know.
In a really tangible way, Laura and I talked this this morning. Like, if a kid does this work-based learning and they figure out that's not what they want to do, we've accomplished something, right? Like, it would have been better for them to know it now as opposed to going to school for three or four years and figuring out.
Or getting into the work base.
And I think the same thing is true with all these things. Like, it's opportunities for kids to fail and try something different and try something new and experience.
Those experiences, whereas they look at other things in the world, it intrigues them and they can apply and go, why did I have to have that? And then on and on, and so that they're that continuous worm, that curiosity.
Time's up, right? You know, the systematic, I'm going to use the word systematic about the book, whatever. It looks like you had the luxury of reading the entire thing already. Whereas I find myself wanting more answers and I've gotten, I've gotten past chapter two, you know, and it's not. Well, it finally mentions, well, what is meat, what are, I'm just, some of the chapter one and chapter two verses are rather vague and I'm just highlighting things. I find myself highlighting things. So let's get into some of the meat potatoes. What's this going to evolve to? And we've already, we mentioned identifying people, identifying challenges, identifying special needs people. 22, first paragraph, you know, the sixes. I like that it says, it levels the playground for kids with challenging backgrounds. And just that tied with us identifying not only this free and reduced folks, but those talents that are about mining and excavating. But what also spoke to me was the next paragraph, we're about halfway through, where it talks about boundaries. And that children need adults and as well as their peers to be able to co-manage and let childs, children know that what is inside and outside of the bounds is able to manage and express emotions appropriately. And I think boundaries, me being a disciplinary and so to speak, is comforting really to a kid, you know, and to those. And then a child that doesn't know his boundaries starts, you know, acting up or whatnot. So I think it's a very, through this, through these challenges and exercises, I think if we can also keep mindful of the boundaries, that would be very beneficial. But page 24 mentions, what will our schools do to uncover and develop the gifts of our children? We're obviously very tuned into that purpose.
This, this was really just fortunate that when we started this conversation in July, this book didn't, I don't even, it didn't come out until April. So I say that to say, it's really fortunate, this, this gives us a compass. Bottom of 24, it's saying exactly what we're saying. And it's Canadian district, you know, what will we do to uncover and develop the gifts of our children? We believe that kids are gifted. We were having that same conversation. We're running this conversation here. Like, this is a great reference point for us as a district right now. And I think as, as this conversation evolves, you'll see it gets more detailed into how the coherence and the framework that must be created. So when we start talking about budgeting, chapter three, chapter four, like this feeds it. When we talk about teacher evaluation conversations or the, I guess, what do we call that? The CEP?
Certified Evaluation Plan?
How does our expectations for ourselves as leaders, how does our expectations for the way we work together help us think about some of these things? help us think about some of these things? When you hear work-based learning in January and in front of the board, how does that align to developing a self-awareness in our students in this process? How do we, it's all connected.
I think those boundaries, sometimes the boundaries are not just behaviorally. I mean, as a teacher, knowing what's expected of me as a, as a teacher, meaning that not just to go in and lecture for an hour, but that there's deep meaningful learning. Page 21 of that box talks about learning experiences that foster this and knowing like what things are expected of me as an educator and those boundaries that exist for me. And that's important, I think, for teachers too. They want to know. They want to know what, what expectations are.
Yeah, we'll just, page 20, mark it too because by summer, some of these start to develop. You'll see, so we say, so one of the things that's like, I would say, just likely to come up and put people first, is gratitude. How do we express gratitude for others? How do we feel that sense of gratitude? Because we, we can all agree that the more we make space for it, the more we see it. It's like, what does that look like? How do you do that authentically? And our, our, we're calling them gift progressions. They're calling this learning progression. Won't look like this. They won't be quite this complex in the beginning. They'll be more accessible, but they will, the higher level will be high level. And they should challenge us as adults to think about these things. So I should, I point to that because this is like the next step after we, after we think about what they're calling the six Cs, which it leads to that more specific observation period.
I've been sitting here watching, Jim, is there something that you were wanting to add in, Jim?
Now, as a journalist who's covered school board meetings for 25 years, all these conversations that the board's been having since Wes has been superintendent, it's kind of been like taking a step on the moon. Because this is completely different perspective from what I'm used to in school board meetings. But when I bought my copy and I read the bottom, the last part of Chapter 2, and all this discussion about culture and changing the way of looking at education, there's a couple sentences here that really kind of brought it home. The change lesson here is that we need to change the culture of learning, not simply the trappings or structures. And, and I realized in this, in this section also talks about how you can't piecemeal this, this change to really be effective. You know, it's, it's a kind of revamping everything in that. And so it's like, the light bulb went on for me anyway, to, who's used to the traditional way, way things go.
I think most school districts are probably, they're just probably having these conversations in executive sessions. I think really the timing of such, this conversation is happening around the country. People, I think part of the school safety conversation comes back to this. Part of the conversation is around what really matters in school. It's coming back to some version of this. And the timing of it is such that I was fortunate enough to really be a part of that conversation. And I think that's, we're not the only people having these conversations right now. We're, we're probably just having conversations a little better than other places.
One thing to your gym, so that whole last section, it's about, it's all about reculturing. That's where I started to have my light bulb moment as well. It went from about a 10 watt to maybe a 15 watt. But, but it started, things started clicking there about pockets versus across the entire system.
Yeah, but I've always thought, I guess because my mom said it, no two kids learn a lot. You have to figure out how your kids can learn the best or learn the most the best way. Instead of using words, you may have to put pictures out there and they go, oh, yeah, that's what it is. And that's why you try to teach your children, if, if they came home from, like if mine came home from school and said, Mama, I don't get it. I don't understand it. Then I would sit down and say, and probably your mama did the same thing, our mamas did the same thing, and said, this is what one plus one is. And, and they would give an example. I'm just, you know, saying that's... But she would say, okay, now look at it this way, instead of looking at it their way. It's like your kid comes home and she would say, Mama, you got to, I would help her with, let's say algebra. She'd say, it was wrong. I said, what do you mean it was wrong? You go back to school and you tell that teacher that... She would come back and say, Mama, you were right. The teacher, Miss so-and-so, said, you just got it a different way. Duh. You got to teach your, and you hope that's what schools do now because kids need to know they're cared about and that we care what they care about. And to me, this is what the first two chapters of this book has done. It's said the same thing over and over, just in different ways, that we need to care what our kids care about and what our kids grow up to be because by the time they get out of high school, they've developed. Unless you're specific in a doctor, a lawyer, or that kind of stuff. But they pretty well much know, majority of them to me know what they want. It's just how do we get them there? How do we, how do we help them take the next step? And that's what I'm anxious to see what we do because they deserve it. Kids deserve it.
That speaks to the well-being, it refers to that foundation of well-being.
That's part of the equity hypothesis. In order, in order to, you know, you were looking at that 41% that is perceived to be, there's a perception that if you're pre-reduced lines, that there's an inequity. Whether that's true or not, we know, varies based on family, household. But the equity hypothesis in this learning is that by investing in that, it creates a platform for all kids to be successful. And that is our, that's our goal.
And we're going to make it work.
That's, that's the impossible.
No, it's not.
No, the impossible is the impossible.
Yeah, and possible.
Were you going to put a, were you going to put another word in there, Wes?
Yeah, I realized it'd been edited and it just needed to be. So we, we'll come back on the 15th and we'll be here. We'll send you guys, you'll get a string cast invite from your person. Says, hey, here's what's going on. Here's how you can prepare. You'll be ahead of the game if you've already read up to Chapter 2. So there'll be people in the room that, it'll be their first, their first conversation. There will be, there will be a little bit of homework that you could start thinking about, which if you're on the, for example, Dedicated to Our Community team, you could begin to look for things, articles, links that you think are going to be important contributors to the conversation. Because in February, we're going to have people to bring. So in your case, Jeff, things that are related to collaboration that you think are meaningful. So we're going to ask you to do some research on your own to prime one thing to contribute to that conversation.
You read the book, starts talking about the steps to take. And she says, the first thing he says is promote powerful conversations. And he gives examples, books and readings and videos allowing us to see that. I think, you know, Wes and I can sit in an office and think certainly, if we get 50 people doing that sort of work, there's a lot of value in that, you know?
Okay, good stuff. I'm already shut down. We have guest comments. Any person wishing to address the board? I'm not reading this. I think we've all made contributions.
First night is chair breaking the rules.
You invite, there's the guest comment.
Thank you, Miss Guest.
Well, we, we can count Jim's as a guest comment even though it wasn't during this session.
Well, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings now. Don't go with that. Anybody who wants to address the board. Chip? Amy?
Casey wants to know how come it was just 30 minutes ago she found out.
Welcome to the crew, Casey. Okay? Okay, do I hear a motion that we adjourned?
Motion.
Motion. Do, who, oh, okay, second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you all very much.